All right, we're gonna get started here in a minute. Can everybody get their seats, please? Alrighty. That's okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Placerville City Council, November 28th, 2017. Sorry we're a little late. We had a robust closed session meeting and quite a bit to discuss. So, anyway, would you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Mayor Clarici.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Do we have, let's see, we don't have any special presentations. Would the City Council have any brief comments they'd like to make? We'll start over here. Tricia?
Yes, thank you.
Wendy?
Well, I would like to offer my congratulations to Bryce Anderson. He is a young man in our community that just obtained his Eagle Scout. And I had the opportunity to represent the city this weekend at his ceremony. And what's wonderful about this young man is that he chose the city of Placerville for his Eagle Scout project, which is quite a big deal. And he's the one that reconstructed the monument in front of the old Z-Pies location to the, it's a monument to the unfortunates who were hanged in keeping our history alive and moving it out of a very unfortunate location by the freeway that no one could see and putting it in a more prominent spot and restoring it with historic material. So, just a, you know, congratulations to Bryce Anderson.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, that was great, yes. Mark?
I'd just like to thank everybody that's had a hand in another successful Christmas tree lighting, not only along the highway but on Main Street, the merchants and all the community members that participated in that. Again, a tremendous success. We were blessed with beautiful weather and thank you all for coming to that. We look forward to a successful holiday season.
Downtown was packed, wasn't it?
It certainly was.
Very vibrant.
I was gonna say the same thing. I was coming here tonight, I was admiring that, our big tree, and I was thinking about all the years that we really thought we were gonna lose it and how everybody's worked, well, not everybody, but people have worked so hard to save it and it's absolutely gorgeous.
I should say thanks to Western Sign and Dave Brazelton. We have a brand-new star on top of the tree this year.
Yes!
And they've done a really spectacular job of making sure that it's well-pointed and it's very lightly lit up and it's nice and bright. So, thank you to this company and all its employees that donate their time to make that happen.
Cool, thank you. All right. And I would like to just remind everybody that we have the Christmas parade this Sunday and it looks like it may rain a little bit on Saturday, but by Sunday it should be okay. So, always a fun event, always a good time, lots of people.
Bring your toys for tots.
Bring your toys for tots, very important, that's why we're there. So, anyway, just want to mention that. And of course, thank the Taylors once again for picking the ball up and...
And the city of Placerville.
And the city of Placerville and a bunch of other people, but you know, the Taylors picked this one up and are making it happen, so very good. So, kudos all the way around and I'm sure we'll have another wonderful parade on Main Street. Okay. Closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor Clarici. Tonight in closed session, the council did not take reportable action. However, a few weeks ago, the council did authorize a settlement of a United States District Court lawsuit, Gay Cox versus the city of Placerville, and that settlement has been effected and achieved with a payment of $25,000 in settlement.
Cool, thank you. And Patty, do you have an announcement to make?
I don't have an announcement.
Or a comment?
I have one more comment, I thought.
Okay.
Wendy and I went to Maybelle Hesser's 105th birthday party. I tell you, we had so much fun. And Wendy, you can comment too, but it was, this little lady has turned 105, she's up at Escaton, and she, she was driving up until the age of 102. Anyway, Sheriff John DiAgostini presented her with an enlarged driver's license. She still has it and they had an old car parade. Unfortunately, it was pouring rain that day, so not everybody got to participate, but she did go for a ride and it was just delightful, so...
And before we left, she made sure that her birthday is on our calendar for the next five years.
Yes.
So, we pledged to be there for the next five years for her birthday party, so...
I love the optimism, that's great.
Way to go, Maybelle. All right, someone want to adopt this agenda?
Move for adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ceremonial matters, we have none. Okay, public comment. Brief non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the city council under specified circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. The mayor will recognize you and when you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. So, first off, do we have any written communications?
Mayor, just the one letter I believe we received today that I want to note in relation to tonight's agenda item 12.1 from Richard Round.
Cool, all right. Okay, so does anybody want to make a comment? Come on up.
Hi, can you hear me? Is it turned on?
Yes, it is.
I'm Jan Carr. My wife and I, Kathy, have moved here about 50 and a half years ago. We really liked living in town. We were back in the Midwest unfortunately for Thanksgiving and we came home yesterday afternoon about four and rested a little bit and came into town, had dinner, I can't say where because that would be advertising for them, but had an enjoyable evening. It was really fun to come in and see the tree. We're sorry we missed the lighting of the tree. We try to attend that when we're here. And I was in town this morning, looked at a lot of the storefronts and noticed how nicely they're decorated, so I think it's gonna be a good time.
Thank you very much, Jan. Would anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Gary Kenworthy. A lot of you here will know me as Coach Kenworthy. And I just want to reiterate about the lighting and I, you know, that we got outdone by, we, because I've been in Placerville since 1959, but we got outdone by Roseville and their, and so I don't, somebody ought to be calling and say, "Drive through Placerville and see, are it beautiful? This is the most beautiful trees I have seen in all my years here." So, nice going to the people who did that. Well, I came tonight not to make fun of anybody or anything like that, but just to say that I've been here a long time, over 55 years now, as the football to the swim programs in Placerville, the dry diggers, dolphins for 50, for 30 years, it seemed like 50 sometimes. Anyway, but I do want to say that Proposition 13 saved me in 19, about, oh, saved me right after about '75, '76. And I just want to reiterate to the fact that we, there's only, I think, 3,500 of us that live in Placerville. And I know you, as a council, I've been here in this building for a lot of times, you know, and I know that you're pressed with this problem on the sewers and everything. And I know you can't do anything about it and I can't either, but I'm just saying that Proposition 13 saved me. I wouldn't be standing here probably because my property taxes were going up much higher than most people's, you know, because I got in here when the getting was good, as Patty knows. And, anyway, I hope that we, that you guys can come up with something so that people like me that not necessarily live on retirement from Eldorado High School for 37 years, and so, that's it. I think that, I hope that it can come to an end someday where not every two, three years we go up another 7% and some, you know, something like this. And I know that I'm hurt too, you know. But anyway, good luck to you guys and hope we can come up with something that we don't have people moving out of Placerville, you know. Anyway, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Coach. Next.
Good evening, Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on a couple items that I raised the last time we were here. And the first has to do with our city manager who does a great job, and I want to suggest that I would never think that the city manager does anything that he's not directed to do, one, in either terms of general policy or specific directives. But it prompted me to think that when we raised this issue last week, that I recall it being said that he's in essence, an employee at suffrage, he can be fired anytime. So, I was gonna suggest that you look at, somebody look at salaries and look at employment contracts because it seems like there should be severance pay. There should be some kind of assurance about employment so that you're not hanging in the loop. We've seen that you can have a matter, like one council member might want a matter put on the agenda and it only takes one member, or it might be somebody else who says, "Well, go down and speak to the board of supervisors about the historic building across the street and boost the Chamber of Commerce." Now, that's not to say that the independence is undermined by the lack of unemployment contract or retirement severance pay, but it certainly has to do with the appearance. So, if you might consider, if that's still the case, looking at what other jurisdictions, municipalities of similar size have for salaries and what kind of employment contracts because that would be appropriate. And the second is to mention that with regards to presentations to the board of advisors about the building across the street, you really should consider taking up that matter because if you don't, then it suggests that when it comes to historic preservation, it of no interest to you that if it was sold to the chamber, they could go ahead and tear it down. So, do you have an interest in that or is your interest just what was expressed before, which is the chamber does great things for promoting business in town? And then lastly, the issues that were raised to the board by other people had to do with the cost of renovation because of ADA compliance issues. I know that the information wasn't accurate. Why? Because my parents were sued by Scott Johnson. So, we had to look at a couple of things. Do we get rid of one floor or do we add an elevator or do we add a chairlift? The building across the street has a chairlift. According to what contractors tell me, if the government does it, it's about $100,000 for an elevator. If you get a chairlift, it's half the price. More importantly, you don't have to go around and inspect it every year and get a license from the state, which makes the elevator very expensive. So, the figures presented to the board wasn't really complete. And it seems like you really ought to take a position on that subject someday. Both matters might be worth taking a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Anyone else wish to speak? All right. Okay. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. The reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. So, does anybody want to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Nope.
It's pretty brief. Does anybody have any questions for this?
Move for approval.
Hold on, okay.
Second.
We got a motion, a second. Would the public like to say something about our consent calendar?
Hi, Sue Taylor. I just noticed that on the check register that we're paying around $47.5,000 to the consultants for the Clay Street realignment. And I guess it's the city's intent to keep moving forward with that project and I don't feel like there's been enough, you know, we've had public workshops, but we really haven't had a public process that feels good in this sense. And from what I've seen, the map seems to change consistently with the information that it's even hard to put out to the public what it is that you're moving forward with. But I am concerned with this amount of money being spent in light of the future rates that you're proposing to increase. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
Good evening, council. On, I believe it was on the accounts payable register, there was a $4,000 item to a landscaping company and I just happened to be at the Clay Street, the Ivy Lot on that Sunday and here's this crew out there cutting down trees, bushes and stuff, and I'm like, what's going on? Who authorized them to come in there and clear out a bunch of growth? And I'm just wondering too, going forward with that realignment project, any trees that are removed typically have to be replaced on a three-to-one ratio for our city standard. So, if they're gone, when you go to do the project, then there's no mitigation for them. So, just wondering why there was a bunch of things cut down over there.
I don't know. Yes?
I'd like to comment.
Hold on, we got one more. Hold the phone, we got one more.
Once they're done.
Okay. Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Evelyn Veerkamp. On the check register, just one more question about an item. The item to ATEEM Electrical Engineering for $9,440, what is that about? Who are they and what is it? What were they programming?
Okay. Are there any, yes, okay. Are there any other comments?
No.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with the last one.
Let's see, Dave, or actually Pierre A-Team is our consultant that works on our telemetry right at the treatment plant?
Yes, we, we use the services of A-Team. They're, they work on our SCADA system and they're working with programming. When the city purchased the new servers to run the plant, it was A-Team that did all the conforming of the servers to the SCADA program. So, but they continue, we continue to utilize their services for electronics and our computer programming at the wastewater treatment facility. Anyways, she, we're happy to answer her questions more specifically if she wants to come in and talk to staff.
You wanna go to the others?
Sure.
Steve, can you answer the tree work, or not tree, but clearing that was done?
I'd be happy to. The city's main sewer trunk line runs right down the creek through the aforementioned area and off of that main goes a lot of our laterals. And due to the high amount of rain we had last year, a lot of those laterals were compromised and it's imperative that we can access those. If we have another winter like we had last year, we want to be able to protect not only our employees and make sure they're safe, but also private property and just the community at large. So, that's why we're in there.
So, and just to add, that was, all of that work was done in accordance with our permit with fish and, I want to say game or wildlife, help me out, Steve.
Yeah, that's correct. It's all through fish and game.
Right, okay.
Well, and since we're all, we're talking money and checks, what was the last one, the first one? The consultants about?
First one was on Clay Street. Pierre, would you like to answer that?
Why are they, why are we spending money?
Sure, just in brief, Drake Haglin and Associates are engineers that the city has contracted with to do the engineering design for the Clay Street realignment and bridge replacement project. So, if any of the speakers have any very specific questions regarding the status of the project, we invite them to contact our office, make an appointment, and we'd be happy to meet with them.
Yes. Well, thank you.
Oh, a question for staff, if I could?
Certainly.
Regarding, thank you, Mr. Evas. Pierre has given me a number of excellent updates on the Clay Street project. People have been concerned about its status and I appreciate that. And it is not been released to the public. There's been no meetings because there have been no meetings. So, the speaker kind of implies like maybe something's going on behind the scenes, but quite frankly, the project is being built and/or the blocks of the project are being built and they will be presented to the public once the city is ready. Would that, would that be a fair statement, Pierre?
That's a fair statement, Councilmember Acuna. Basically, just to give a real brief status, I know the public is waiting for the release of the public review draft on the environmental impact report. We've essentially completed review of the administrative draft. The comments are in with the consultant that's preparing the document. We're waiting for Caltrans to complete the archaeological studies and reports that are to accompany that document. So, we're working with Caltrans right now to get their approval of those documents so we can incorporate that into the document and then have it released to the public.
Thank you, Pierre. You know, I think it speaks volumes that we're waiting for archaeological and I know there's also Native American issues that are being answered through that process. So, the right steps are being taken. Thank you.
Yes, okay. We have a motion and second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Mayor Clarici.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Okay. All right, let's see. Let's see here, we don't have any ordinances, we don't have any public hearings, nothing was pulled off of the consent calendar. Discussions and action items, adoption, adopt a resolution authorizing staff to distribute a Proposition 218 notice to city water payer, rate payers as soon as practicable, including the proposed water rates, drought water rates and wastewater rates, option number four, and directing staff to hold a Proposition 218 public hearing regarding the said water rates, drought water rates and wastewater rates on February 13th, 2018 at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, which is here. Before I ask Mr. Warren to go into his thing, I have a little statement to read. Good evening, good evening, everyone. Before we launch into the staff report and talk about our options for water and sewer rates, I have a couple of things I want to say. First off, I am not speaking for the rest of the council. These are my feelings and observations. Thank you to staff for putting together two excellent information packages for both tonight's meeting and our workshop. The information provided was well-considered and well-communicated. I know it took a lot of hard work to get it to us, to get us to this point. I also want to recognize the Measure L and H Committee for being the sounding board for the many recommendations put forth by staff. Their wisdom and expertise are reflected in the proposal before us this evening. They have provided invaluable services to this community and they deserve our thanks. After our workshop, I spoke to a number of folks about this issue, some of them for hours at a time. I have taken their comments to heart and hopefully I have helped them understand how we, the city, got to where we are tonight. I doubt if any of them felt better about the hard choices we will be making, but at least we were able to have a reasonable discussion and I am hoping that that reasonableness extends to this evening. Here's what I know, that any rate increase for water and sewer will have impacts on budgets all over town, that those impacts will be hardest on people of limited means and that many of those people are senior citizens on fixed incomes or young families trying to figure out a way to get by, that these people will not be giving up luxuries but will be making hard choices in budgets where even $10 or $20 a month can be a big deal. The fact is, most rate payers in town will be able to pay potentially, to pay potential increases we are contemplating with tonight's action. But just because most people have the ability to pay does not make this decision any easier and we do not take that for granted, or I do not take that for granted. That our sewer rates especially are higher than a lot of other places and there are reasons for that. And I also know that those reasons will not mean much to the people I just talked about. I know that the entire council will be paying these higher rates as well. We are not exempt from this and to one degree or another, we will have to make budget choices to accommodate this increased cost just like everyone else in town. Myself and others on the council have shared ideas with staff to help shelter the more vulnerable in our community or perhaps ease the impact a potential rate increase might have on everyone, but have been frustrated in our efforts, not by staff or arithmetic, but by the rules governing how rates must be applied to all rate payers. We have less flexibility than you may imagine. Finally, tonight, we will be talking mostly about the state of finances as they relate to the rates we pay for water and sewer service. To some degree, we will be talking about the actions of previous councils. To that point, it would be easy to blame them for the situation we find ourselves in presently. That would be unfair. They made difficult decisions under extraordinarily difficult circumstances. That is, they did the best they could for the rate payers then, just as we will try to do that tonight. Mr. Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate those comments. I just want to make one comment before I turn it over to Mr. Warren for his presentation. We sent out a flyer to announce tonight's meeting. Hopefully you got that in your utility bill. There was a typo on that flyer and it stated that the public hearing in February was February 18th. You'll notice on tonight's agenda, there's, it talks about in the resolution states, that's actually February 13th. So, I want to make sure you know that now and also, we will be sending out an additional flyer in our January bills, which will have that correction and announce the public hearing in February, as February 13th, and we'll have all the correct information so no one should be thinking of the wrong date on that. So, we will make that correction. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dave Warren for the presentation.
Thank you, Cleve, and thank you, Mayor, and City Council. We have a lot of information for you tonight. This is a follow-up to our workshop that was held on November 8th. Some of the information will be repeated because I know not everyone was able to attend the workshop, but it will focus more on the rates themselves. So, we have your overview there on the screen. And to start off with our mission statement, which is to provide clean, safe and reliable water and wastewater collection and treatment services at a reasonable cost to Placerville customers 24 hours a day and seven days a week. And literally, the city is responsible for ensuring that when you turn on the tap, the water comes out nice and clean and safe and when you flush the toilet, that we receive those materials and treat it correctly under state guidelines. The primary goal of this rate study is to establish rates that cover the cost of operating and maintaining the sewer and water systems over the next five years. The services that we currently provide is the water acquisition and delivery, which is essentially delivering 445 million gallons of water through 45 miles of pipe and collecting the sewer through 50 miles of pipe and treating approximately 400 million gallons of wastewater. The engineering, accounting and general administration support those three divisions mentioned earlier. One of the things we want to differentiate tonight is the difference between operating costs and project costs. So, to process, to deliver the water, to treat the sewer, those are operating costs. To build a new sewer line or build improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, those are projects. And so, what we're showing here, I know it's a little faint, is we have two buckets here, if you will, and the first one is water rates. And you can see that personnel, services, supplies, debt... you can see that personnel, services, supplies, debt payments, equipment, insurance, other expenses, no projects. Those are the operating costs, and those operating costs are covered by water rates. Measure H, Measure L do not cover operating costs. Sewer rates, same thing, same list. On the next slide, you'll see what Measure H sales tax covers, water line projects, sewer line projects, water reclamation facility projects, which is our sewer treatment plant, sewer debt payments, water debt payments. Measure L, very similar, street projects, water line projects, sewer line projects, and water reclamation facility projects. So all projects. There's been questions as to, well, if we pass Measure L, we were told that it would, and Measure H, keep our rates down. Well, it is doing that, and I want to demonstrate that. So Measure H and Measure L budget for this year, there's a little over $1.2 million in sewer projects and $406,000 in water projects. The value of a 1% sewer rate increase is $55,472. So if you divide that $55,000 into the $1.2 million, it's equivalent to a 23.16% sewer rate increase. So if it wasn't for Measure H and Measure L, we would have to raise rates even beyond what we're talking tonight by 23.16% or $39.29 every two months for the average customer, residential customer. Water, likewise, if you take the $406,000 in water projects and divide that $17,765 for a 1% increase, equates to a 22.87% increase in water rates, again, over and beyond what we're talking tonight for water rates, or $16.25 every two months for the average residential, single-family residential customer. And that's, less the discount, not including the Measure H discount for sewer, by the way. And then combined, $55.54 bimonthly equivalent rate increase that we're avoiding because of Measure H, Measure L. We're also looking at cost-saving strategies, and I'd like to hand it over to Steve Yule and Rick Ferrera to talk about the root foaming program that we're looking to implement, as well as the enhanced flushing program.
Okay, thanks, Dave. So on the sewer side, one of the things we have discovered is that the true intrusion from roots is really causing a problem. The only way really to deal with it is a foaming program rather than cutting roots. When you cut roots, they grow right back. When your foam program is implemented, it allows us to not have to go back to those same lines over and over. So it lasts a lot longer. It reduces our maintenance from line to line. So that's one of the programs we have discovered which will drive our maintenance costs down. The enhanced flushing program, right now, with 48 miles of sewer line, we are not getting to that line. It takes about eight years for us to go around through the whole system right now. We'd like to do that in about two years to three years. It reduces our violations that we have, which are reportable to the state. The zinc issue, I'm going to have to skip, that's out of order. The water detection, I'm going to go back to the water side, the water detection, a leak detection program. We have a lot of old pipes in the city. We really need to look at finding those leaks, detecting them through our program. We have the equipment. We just don't have all the staff to do that. We need to expand our flushing program. So that's, those are a couple of the water things. The unfunded program needs, and I don't know, Dave, if you want to work on the SRF loan stuff, or do you want me to go?
Not yet, no.
Okay. So the additional Public Works positions that we are asking for in Public Works, one will be a maintenance two worker for the first year, then we will move them to a water distribution three operator. That person or that position would help us with our valve exercising program, our hydrant exercising program, and our flushing program. We have combined our main sewer, our main water system, Sierra system, and our main water system together. We were a D2 certification. Now we are a D3 certification. So we need a higher level of operators to be on staff at all times 24/7. That's by the regulations by the state. In the sewer side, we have a real need for staying on top of our FOG program, which is our fats, oils, and grease, which causes a big problem in maintenance of our sewer systems. We really need to be on our sewer flushing program and that root foaming program. Back to you, Dave.
Thank you, Rick, and I'll hand it over to Pierre Rivas to talk about the WEAR study and zinc.
Thank you very much, Dave. Just to talk briefly about the WEAR zinc study, WEAR stands for a water effects ratio. And essentially, what that study is looking to do is, we currently have a level of zinc in our effluent that requires removal. And so we're currently employing ferric chloride that we add to the effluent, to the water, to precipitate the zinc out. But unfortunately, one of the byproducts of the ferric chloride, although it is lowering the amount of zinc, so we're in full compliance with the state regulations, it tends to cause a precipitate on our ultraviolet bulbs, which is very maintenance-intensive. There's a lot of labor then involved in removing those bulbs, and then cleaning them off and putting them back into the channel. And so we're looking at saving, if successful, basically the water effects ratio is to prove or show that the effluent going into the Hangtown Creek water, because it doesn't take into account, at least the laboratory studies where they derive of the limitations, doesn't take into effect water hardness, pH, different constituents in the water, that it's not as detrimental to wildlife, aquatic life in the water in a laboratory versus being in Hangtown Creek. So I think, at least at this stage, we're very confident that we'll have a very successful study, and then we will no longer be required to add the ferric chloride, which should reduce the maintenance and operation cost by about $50,000 a year. Any questions on the WEAR study?
I'd like to hand it over to Cleve Morris to talk a little bit about the water reclamation facility solar power project that could potentially save a significant amount of money.
Thank you, Dave. This project, the council knows you approved the Johnson Controls Project last year, about March, April, I believe is when we approved the agreement. We are currently going through the process of obtaining the financing for that project, which will approve a solar field at the wastewater treatment plant, which will cover about 50% of our electricity use at the plant. In the early years, the cost savings are a little bit lower, but they are cost savings, starting at about $30,000 in the first year. In the latter years of that contract, it gets up to over $100,000, closer to $200,000 a year that we would be saving. So all of those savings will move, will go into this process and help us keep our rates down if we can implement those. So again, we're working on the financing for that. Hopefully, within the next year, we'll be able to implement that program.
Thank you, Cleve. And I'm going to turn it over back to Pierre to talk about the water reclamation facility operator position.
Thank you, Dave. Basically, staff is seeking to add an additional wastewater treatment plant operator, operator one and two. The reason why we're making that request is for a number of different reasons. One, basically, the complexity of our plant, the owner's manual that was provided to us when the city then accepted the plant, when it was upgraded back in 2008, 2009, called for a staffing of 11 for optimum operation and maintenance of the plant. We've currently been operating with only eight, and with the continuing compliance of permit requirements with the state, now that the plan has reached an age where there's a lot of maintenance requirements, the staffing demands are very, very high, and we're seeing a very large increase in overtime. So we're hoping to reduce overtime costs, be able to more effectively maintain the plant as it solely wears out, or needs to be replaced pumps and filters and different things, and to also allow for the planning for when we have staff that may retire. We have current staff now, younger folks that want to move up, and so I think it's sort of succession planning as well to make sure that we always maintain a good top-notch staffing at the plant. Happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, Pierre. Two other things we'd like to talk about is equipment replacement program. We're trying to develop a comprehensive equipment replacement program where we routinely replace equipment out of a planned schedule. Currently, we're replacing things mostly cash on the barrel as we can afford it. We have done some financing to do some catch-up. We would like to do another financing for equipment, mostly trucks and other types of public works equipment, over the three years from now. And so we've assumed that in the rates. The other thing is normal inflation. Everything goes up. The cost of water purchased from EID, for example, paper and pencils, chemicals, so on and so forth, everything goes up, so we have to cover those costs. The other thing, I want to go back to the senior maintenance worker in the sewer division. We talk about the FOG program, the foaming. The city has an insurance deductible, or general liability, of $50,000. We had three sewer backup claims this past year, 12 months, that at least two of those hit our deductible, where it was the maximum $50,000. So, and that's money out literally down the drain, that if we get ahead of, with a foaming program, for example, to reduce the amount of restrictions in our pipes that cause these type of backups, we'll save that money in the future. So. Looking at the positions, this is for the Public Works Department. You can see that, and I'll kind of go over to the right-hand side, it shows, back in '06, '07 in the blue, we had 15.22 FTE. And some of these positions are split between general fund water and sewer. That's why you see that funny .22. Today, we have 9.69. So over five less positions today, and yet the demand is even greater. And then you can see on the left, the split between sewer and water. For sewer, we had 7.18 FTE, full-time equivalent positions in '06, '07. Today, 5.1 water in '06, '07, 8.03, and 4.59, about half of what we had back then before the Great Recession. The water reclamation facility is a little bit different story. In '06, '07, we had an older plant that was not as complex as our current plant. In 2006, we endeavored on a construction project, which was a three-year project, and the plant is much more sophisticated and complex. It takes more people to run it. It's a more efficient plant. It doesn't use as many chemicals, but it does take more people. So we currently have 8.5 FTE, and we're looking to add an additional operator position, as Mr. Rivas indicated. Now, jumping into water rates, I wanted to show you currently, for every dollar you pay in your water bill, where it goes. So right now, 36 cents goes to personnel, 34 cents to supplies, and that includes water purchase from EID, overhead, which is finance, city council, city administration, services, 4 cents, equipment contingencies, debt service, 15 cents. And that's your water buck. And in developing the rates, we have our consultant, Bartle Wells and Associates, who will speak later. In providing them cost information, we consider personnel costs. We are required to negotiate with our employees by state law, and we did make certain assumptions over the next five years for salaries and benefits. Supplies and services, we looked at average consumer price index, which over the past five years is 2.8%, and that's what we assumed for most other things that you see listed there. This slide shows the operating revenues versus expenditures, and you can see that currently we have a balanced budget in 17, 18. However, we did have to trim back, we had to trim back our contingency in other areas in order to balance this year's budget. And you can see, over the next five years, we'll have over a $400,000 deficit unless rates are increased. And the deficit each year, you can see the growth. For example, in fiscal year 18, 19, 7.35, 7.31, all the way down to 22.23. It's hard to think about that, 5.59%. So you can see the growth each year in the water enterprise fund budget. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Doug Dove and Michael DeGroot to talk about the water rate study.
Thank you, Dave. So my name is Michael DeGroot with Bartle Wells Associates, and I'm going to be talking to you about what these costs mean for your water rates. So these are the proposed water rate increases, and the first increase will take place in February of 2018, and it would be a 7.5% increase. Then about a little more than a year later, in June 2019, is your second increase of 7%. Then 5.5%, 5%, and finally, 4.5% in June 2022. So we took a look at your existing water rates, and we're proposing to make some changes. So your current rate structure is composed of a fixed bimonthly base charge, and that's currently $27.56. Then on top of that, you've got a commodity charge, which is charged per unit of consumption. And so for the first 1000 cubic foot, it's $2.94, which is very low. And then from 10 units to 25 units, it's $3.52 per unit. And finally, it's $3.81 for anything above 2500 cubic foot. And 100 cubic foot is about 748 gallons. Now, we're proposing to move your rate structure to a fixed base charge plus a commodity charge per each 100 cubic foot. And essentially, the reason why we're proposing to change your rate structure is because there's been a change in the legal interpretation of tiered water rates. Essentially, you can't simply allocate costs to tiers to encourage conservation. You've got to have your rate based on cost of service. And we looked at the city of Placerville's cost for water, and essentially, the city pays a uniform charge for wholesale water from El Dorado Irrigation District. So as a result of these legal implications, we're recommending just a flat, uniform rate per 100 cubic foot. So this is kind of showing you just revenue neutral, no rate increase, just the impact of the structure change. And we've also recommending lowering the base charge to, so that lower users aren't going to be hit by a large rate increase, since before they were paying a low charge for the first 10 units. And based on our proposed structure, which is shown in orange, a median user will see no change in their bill. Average users will see about a 3% increase, and then the higher users will see a little bit of an increase. So here are your proposed water rates, and these are the maximum rates that we're proposing. Currently, you've got your tiered structure with a base charge at $27.56. We're proposing to lower that to $20.75 and charge $4.15 per unit. Then that would increase by 7% the next year, all the way through June 2022, with the rate ending up at $25.73 for your base charge, and $5.17 per unit for your commodity charge. So on the next slide, we've got your lifeline customers. And essentially, the city of Placerville has a low-income lifeline rate, which is a 25% discount on the proposed rates. So here's the proposed water rates with sample bills based on your average user of 1400 cubic foot. And under your current rates, the non-lifeline is $71.04 in the blue, and the lifeline is $53.48 in the orange. After the first year in February 2018, that would go to $78.85 for two months, and the lifeline would go to $59.25. And you can see that that would increase to $98.11 in June 2022, with the lifeline rate going to $73.62, and that's for two months of service. This next slide shows you the bimonthly increase. So, the first increase in February 2018 would increase the average user's bill by $7.81 for non-lifeline and $5.77 for lifeline. Then, in the second year, $5.66 for two months for the non-lifeline and $4.18, and so on, all the way down to June 2022, which with a $4.33 for two-month increase for non-lifeline and $3.21 for lifeline. This next slide shows you the historical bimonthly water bills for an average user. And what this is showing you is that in our last rate increase, the maximum rates were $95.81 for non-lifeline and $71.94 for lifeline. And the city of Placerville has decided to implement lower than that. You can see the current rates are $71.04 and $53.48. And this was really a decision made in the wake of the Great Recession. The city wanted to protect its residents from large increases, but we've ended up in a place where we're not fully recovering the cost of service. And you can see on our proposed rate, option four, on the far right, that after the first increase, we'd be going to $78.85. So, still not quite making up the loss from not fully increasing the rates. So, on this slide, we've got a regional comparison of your bills, and you can see that Placerville is at kind of the lower mid level at $71.04. And after the first increase, the city will still kind of stay in the low-to-mid range at $78.85. And this chart will also show you, in the blue, is kind of the fixed charge, which is the base charge in Placerville's case, and then the orange is the volumetric charge. And you can see that we're proposing to lower that fixed amount. So, as a result of kind of sort of lowering the fixed charges, we're also recommending that the council consider drought water rates. We don't think it's likely that consumption will decrease from this point as we're coming out of the drought, but just in case, we are recommending these drought rates, which is about a 15% increase on your normal rates, and that would go on the volumetric charge. And this would be implemented in the event that EID and the city declare a drought. And these would be the maximum rates. So, if the drought is less than expected, then these rates can be lowered. So, that's it for the water.
Thank you, Michael. And on the drought rates, if the state or EID, you know, demanded that the city reduce its consumption, this is something, a tool that the council could use to shore up its revenues when people begin to use less water. And you wouldn't have to necessarily adopt these exact rates at that point in time. And like Michael said, I doubt we would use these in the next five years, because we've kind of had a really bad drought that happens maybe 20, every 20 or 30 years. But if you did, you could actually, if you adopt these in February, you could, if a drought were to occur in the next five years, implement them, but at a lesser rate. So, say if, you know, the demand is 15% or 10%, you could implement a lesser drought rate if you chose to do so. Sewer rates. Like water, we wanted to show you what a sewer dollar looks like. And so, for every dollar paid for sewer rates, 28 cents goes to personnel, 13 to services, 6 cents to supplies, 5 cents to overhead, and 47% debt payments, coverage, equipment, transfers, contingencies, and expenses. About 45% or 45 cents is just debt. So, if we stopped, everybody stopped flushing their toilets and everybody left, we'd still be stuck with about 45 cents per dollar for debt, for improvements to the plant. Like water, we evaluated all the cost factors, including personnel, supplies, services, debt, property, and general liability, equipment, contingency. Essentially, the same assumptions as water, except a larger budget. And I can tell you that the chemicals for the plant, we did assume a 5% increase, because they tend to be more volatile than your average commodities. Little bit different story on your sewer enterprise fund budget. We're starting out with a 400 and some change deficit, $400,000 deficit, and that's because we're not fully funding our 2006 SRF loan that the payments began about five years ago. The difference, that 400,000, we've been funding out of a rate stabilization reserve, which was built early on when the payments were less for that loan through a workout that we negotiated with the state. That reserve is now depleted, or will be depleted this fiscal year, by the end of this fiscal year in June. And so, we need to shore up our rate revenues in order to make up for that. Plus, our operating costs are going up. So, over the next five years, we anticipate going from about a $432,000 deficit to over a $2 million deficit unless rates are increased. The mayor mentioned the work that the Measure H, Measure L Sales Tax Committee did, and I would echo his sentiments. And at their meeting on November 16th, they recommended that $548,501 from the Measure H Fund be used to fund a 20% sewer enterprise fund debt coverage. In addition to our payment on all of our debts, we're required to have a 20% coverage ratio, meaning that 20% of our total debt payment, we have to demonstrate having that coverage. It's a covenant with our bonds, our '06 bonds, as well as our SRF loan. And the recommendation was is to use a little over half a million dollars to afford that coverage. The coverage can also be used for projects. So, you can demonstrate that money coming into the fund and then use it for sewer projects. So, the idea is, we're still doing a half a million dollars in projects, but we're also using it to demonstrate our coverage. Just so you know, that's about a 9%. By doing that, it avoids about a 9% rate increase, just for that piece. We talked about $55,000 a year for sewer rate, 1% increase. Again, that avoids about a 9% rate increase right there. So, these are other things we're doing to try to minimize the rates. The other thing was to, and I know there's been a lot of discussion about this, is our sewer charge discount, which is about a 9% discount on average. This is something that, again, comes from Measure H. The recommendation was is to continue transferring it about a half, another half million dollars for debt payment, but not pass on a discount to the ratepayers. And I'd like to kind of jump ahead a little bit. A discount dollar, if you decrease the discount, that dollar is equal to a rate increase dollar. So, before we raise rates, the committee looked at it very closely, you know, the council and staff of what is the right thing to do. In the end, if you reduce or eliminate the discount, you're actually minimizing the base of your rates, which means in five years, if we have to raise rates, the amount of increase is actually less because your base is smaller. Looking at the sewer enterprise fund deficit, you can see that each year, it grows. The first year, 7.99%. In this fiscal year, that's where it's at today. 10.77% in 1819, and you can see the percentages there, 6, 5, 5, and almost 4% in 22, 23. At the workshop, we looked at four options, what to do with the discount. We looked at, do we keep the discount, the sewer charge discount? Do we eliminate the discount? Do we cut the discount in half for the next five years? Do we phase out the discount, $100,000 over a five-year period, kind of weaning off one fifth a year? And what the committee, the Measure H, Measure L committee recommended was to, again, eliminate the discount. So, you can see on this slide what the equivalent rate increase, just for sewer rates. You can see that if we kept the discount, we would have to raise rates in fiscal year 1718, or 1819, 18, excuse me, by 13%. June 19, 9%, and then 3.75% year three, year four, and then 2.75% in June of 22. If you eliminate the discount to zero, eliminate it, it would be 5.75% effective February 2018, 7.25 in June 19, 4.54, and then 3 in 22, 23. The rates themselves, you can see, this is option one. If we kept the discount, again, 13% in February, you can see that the current base charge... Sorry about that. Current base charge is 16211 for a single-family residential account. That base charge would go up to $183.18 or 13%. And you can see the increases all the way to 22, 23, $220.84. The commodity charge, which is water consumption, winter water consumption from December to February, over 750 cubic feet, from $7.51 to $8.49, all the way to $10.23 in year 22. And lifeline rates, it goes from $121.58 all the way up to 165.62. The commodity charge would go from $5.63 to $7.67 with the discount of $15. Option four, eliminating the discount, you can see, again, the base charge going up, but not as rapidly. Again, 16211 for single-family residential, maximum rate $205.81 in year five, commodity rate from $7.51 to $9.53, and lifeline from 121.58, base charge to 154.36, and the commodity charge from $5.63 to $7.15 in year five. So, the idea is, for example, the base charge, going back to option one, you can see that the base charge in year five is $220.84. 1% of that amount is more than $205.81 in option four. So, again, as, you know, in five years from now, when rates have to be increased again, you're talking about a smaller base, so that helps everybody out in the end. Looking at the actual bill, the bimonthly bill, sewer bill for single-family residential, the average is $1,050 for a two-month period. The current is $169.64. And it's really the same, this is comparing option one to option four with or without the discount. You can see that each, you can see the progression, but really, it makes very little difference, and that's again, because of dollars, a discount reduction is the same as a dollar increase. You do have a little rounding differences as the revenues ramp up. That's why there's slight differences there. So, at year five, you can see the ultimate rate is, option four is $234.42. The first increase in February 2018 would go from 193, or 19, excuse me, 169.64 to 195.26 in option four. And then, the difference, when you look at the bimonthly difference for each option, you can see that in the blue, option one, in February 2018, $24 versus 25.62 for option four. And then, much less increases in future years, June 2019, $14.16 versus 18.78. And you can see the differences each year thereafter. The ultimate, the last increase is option four, $6.83 versus $6.73. Again, not a big difference between the two options. Looking at lifeline, again... Lifeline, same story, not a big difference between option one and option four. The current bill with the discount, $123.47 in February of 2018. Option one, 141.47. Option four, 146.43. The ultimate rate would be, or bill would be 173.63. Option one, 175.80 for option four. And just for those of you that were at the workshop, these are the same numbers, we're just not showing all four options because of the committee's recommendations. And then, the increases for lifeline, you can see in February, slightly higher for option four, $18 versus 22.96. Pretty minimal in future years, the second year, June 19, 14.08 versus 10.62. And then, you can see it goes single-digit in the three future years. And like Michael mentioned earlier, when you look at our Proposition 218 Notice rates, the ultimate rate in our 2009 Proposition 218 Notice, the bill at average consumption was 199.43. And you can see that today, our current rates, the bill is 169.64. And we did pass on the CPI adjustments to the ratepayer at a slower pace, but still below the 2009 level. And then, the proposed option four, effective February 16, 2018, just slightly below the 2009 Proposition 218 level, 195.26 for option one, 146.43. So, again, we're making up for lost time. Michael, did you want to talk about the survey?
Yes, so Bartle Wells conducted a sewer rate survey for the city of Placerville, and you can see that the city of Placerville is in the mid-to-high range at 169.64, and that will stay in the mid-to-high range, going up to 195.25. And one thing I'd like to point out on this survey is that many of these agencies are fixed, whereas Placerville sewer rates are based on water usage, and that really helps out the low user. It allows them to control their bills better. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. So, now, we have some example bills for you. These are fictitious, by the way. The first one is Pamela Panner. And Pamela's very frugal. She only uses 500 cubic feet of water every two months. And her sewer, she used about 450. And so, this bill, just pointing out, can you go back one step? The consumption, I don't know if you can see the pointer, but this is the consumption on the bill for the current billing period. And below here is the sewer. Because this is a residential sewer customer, the consumption that's used for sewer charges is based on the winter consumption period of December to February. So, it's 450 versus 500 here. So, you can see with the new rates, and we'll actually blow it up for you a little bit. So, again, the 500 cubic feet. bit, so, again, the five hundred cubic feet here, you can see that in, uh, the May bill, which will be the first bill that these rates, if approved, would become effective. Um, the water charge would be forty-one dollars and fifty cents. The sewer charge would be one seventy-one, forty-three, for a total of two hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-three cents, or three dollars and fifty-five cents average per day. Now, Mr. Wyatt Earp, we took a little tombstone, uh, field of this, so he uses a little bit more water, but he's still a good guy. He uses eleven hundred cubic feet, um, on his May bill. Uh, for sewer, he used a thousand. And, uh, you can see that his water charge is totaled sixty-six dollars and forty cents for two months, and sewer charge is one ninety-one, twenty-eight, for a total of two fifty-seven, sixty-eight for two months. And again, monthly, you just divide that in half. Um, average per day, four dollars and twenty-nine cents. Now, the third is high, uh, the high consumption. What we did is we asked Bartle Wells to look at our water consumption bands and, and the low, medium, and high. And Johnny Ringo was the highest. Um, he used thirty-two hundred cubic feet. Uh, he's not so nice. Uh, it's, it's okay to use water, but, you know, anyway, so, I don't know if you've seen Tombstone or not, but, um, so, the water charges in his case is a hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. The, um, sewer char- consumption, twenty-five hundred, charges three-ten, uh, three hundred and ten dollars and thirty-eight cents for a total of four sixty-three, ninety-three, or seven dollars and seven three, seventy-three cents average per day. So... And there's been questions, well, if we don't raise rates, what would happen? Well, one, uh, it could cause the city to default on our oh-six SRF loan, uh, payments, which is not good. We're looking at refinancing our two thousand six, uh, revenue bonds for the sewer enterprise fund, which could save the city money in the long run. Um, services would have to be cut and, uh, increased, we have a, an increased exposure to state fines. Um, if we're not doing the things we're supposed to be doing, reducing our, the state, um, is cracking down on, uh, sewer spills, and whenever we have a sewer spill, it could become more expensive to both the property owner and the city. So, uh, experi- you know, the last bullet, experiencing a growing number of sewer backups and damage to private property, so. Next steps. So tonight, we're asking the city council to, um, essentially authorize staff to issue a Proposition two eighteen notice, uh, to ratepayers in early December. If that happens, we would issue the notice, um, in early December for both water and sewer rates. Um, it would also set a public hearing in February, uh, as Mr. Morris indicated. The date is February thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Uh, we will also provide additional information through notices, Facebook, city's website. Um, the rates would actually become effective, um, in May of, the bills would take, would actually be issued in May of two thousand eighteen. So, um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Does the council have any questions? No?
Not at this time.
Shoot. Do you have any questions?
Not right now.
Okay. Trish? Right now? Okay. Uh, so we will open this up, uh, to the public. Once again, three minutes, it's up there in the little red thingy. And, um, so, come on down.
Oh, someone taller than me. Hi, I'm David Zalinski. Uh, we just showed up to say, you gotta do what you gotta do, sock it to us. And, uh... And since Measure L, somewhere on the, uh, topic, um, it is true that California Native Plant Society is meeting tonight. It's true that they're looking at rare and endangered species on a hill. It's true that the name of the hill is consonant vowel, consonant vowel. But it is not Lane Hill, where Lane Court, Lane Way, and Lane Dry are. There are some rare and endangered species growing in ancient deep potholes there, but it's Pine Hill, so we're safe for a moment. All right, thank you.
I was, I was wondering where you were going with that. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Sue Rodman, um, ratepayer, resident, and ma- member of the Measure H L committee. I hope you had a good Thanksgiving. And these are my comments on the item twelve point one. Both Measure H and Measure L were passed to fix our broken systems, leaking water pipes, broken sewer pipes, and failing roads. Measures H and L do not fund operating expenses. User rates need to fund ongoing daily operations, as proposed in this item. The original purpose for Measure H was to reduce rates by two actions. One, fund debt payment for the wastewater treatment plant, so ratepayers would not have to bear the entire debt load. And two, repair failing infrastructure for both water and sewer systems, so ratepayers would not have to pay for all infrastructure repair and improvement. When you fund repair and replacements, it will lower costs to maintain the systems over the long term, subsequently reducing the need to raise rates. Measure H's thirty years is for the long term. Measure L included roads with water and sewer for a more complete infrastructure repair and improvement package. The sewer discount program was originally recommended by the Measure H Committee to help people over the double whammy of major sewer and water rate increases in two thousand nine, coupled with the Great Recession. The discounts have been in effect for six years, and over three million dollars have been given back to sewer customers. I think the goal for sewer discounts has been accomplished. As part of the current rate study, the Measure H L Committee requested that the study address options for the sewer discount program. From, with several options for continuation to elimination, the study determined that the best option for all ratepayers is to eliminate the discount program. That option provides the lowest ongoing base for sewer rates and the lowest initial rate increase for the five-year period. The discounts do need to end, and the Measure H income be used for its original purpose. As stated in Measure H itself, debt payment and infrastructure repair and improvements, and that will benefit all the ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sue Taylor, um, I was hoping to hear more public involvement, but I'm not seeing it yet, so I will, um, make some s- s- comments and statements and ask some questions. When you had your, what you called a workshop, um, recently, I think what it really was, was a study that was presented to the city council to, which is part of the two eighteen process in order for you to increase your water rates. I think it was a bit deceiving to call it a workshop or a discussion, um, because it put off people from coming in to find out what was happening. And I was one of those. I was actually at another meeting regarding water rates, um, and wasn't worried about this, because it was, in my mind, presented as a workshop to discuss the problem. But what it really was, is a legal process, that you'd already hired, um, this, um, the consultants to present this, which is what you have to do in order to raise the rate. So, being here now, at this meeting today, it's pretty much predetermined that you're already had decided to raise our, the rates. And also, to say that our opinion counts also seems misleading, because from what I heard from the workshop, there wasn't really a lot of involvement from the public to have discussion on the overall issue. And then third, to drop this over the holidays, I think is, um, I don't know if that's a strategy, because I think there's three other water districts that are doing the same thing at the same time. It kind of disengages the public. So, um, the Prop two eighteen proposition, is what they always call this, as we're doing the two eighteen, it allows the ratepayers to stop the rate increase by objecting to the rate with a protest letter, which is also kind of, um, at a disadvantage, because if, um, ratepayers do not protest, then their non-involvement is counted as a yes vote for the rate increase. And many of the public does, does not understand that, because I don't think that it's really explained to them in this process. Um, it seems like a lot of this is because of the overbuilding of the sewer plant and the debt that we have because of it. When I just saw that forty-five cents of our dollar to the sewer goes to the debt, um, one of my questions is, what is the debt remaining on the sewer plant that we're having to, um, take care of that? And, um, also, my fear, and I wish I knew, I'd been able to spend more time, I would have come to the meeting if I understood that it was really part of a two eighteen process. And so I feel like I haven't researched enough to make a solid opinion about, um, where this is headed. But my fear is, if this is not protested, what it does, um, is, it gives the financing, um, authority, or financing agents to, um, know that they can give you loans, that if we don't protest, you can continue to put the city into debt with, um, more infrastructure.
Sue, can you please wrap it up?
Sure. So, my questions, it'd be nice to have answered, um, is, and these were given to me by other people that couldn't be here, along with some of my own, is EID giving us the best rate for the water that we're purchasing? Um, how much is the city marking that up to the ratepayers? Do we really need this additional staff? I think it was kind of explained in your presentation. Thank you. And, um, the commercial wa- water rates were not really in the presentation, but I did see some of that in the handout that we got. Um, that I do have a concern, because I was looking at some of the discounts that I guess have been given to commercial use, which are pretty huge for some industries. And I, um, I mean, up to some of these is five hundred and thirty dollars, which is gonna be a shocker if you remove that discount to some of those, um, businesses, but, um, I'm sure that will work out. Um, and then, so my other questions are, um, how much will this solar project cost? I think you brought that up, that you'd like to implement with this. And then, um, will there be loans taken out because the rates are being increased? Or will the deficiencies that have been presented be covered by these increases? Um, and then I'm curious what the equipment replacement will be. Maybe you could explain what that is and the cost of it. And then, if, by chance, um, because part of this process is allowing the public to protest the rate increase, um, I didn't see a, uh...
Sue, please wrap this up. Please.
Okay.
Please.
Um, there's a letter that you have to send out to the public, and I didn't see that attached in this, in this information, so...
Okay.
Um, part of that is why I'm bringing that up, is because to legally pass two eighteen, there are two requirements.
You have, Sue, you've brought it up. You have brought it up.
Well, no, not, not according to, I'm reading the law out of two eighteen real quickly, and then I'm done.
You are abusing your three minutes.
Appreciate that.
You are abusing your three minutes.
So, revenues derived from the fee or charge shall not exceed the funds required to provide the property-related service. Well, you haven't brought this up as a legal process.
We've heard your question, we have heard your, Sue, we have heard your question.
Then you will be...
We will take it up.
I'm just trying to cover it for you, so you're not challenged.
You don't need to cover it for us, we're fully aware of the two eighteen process.
But it hasn't been co- covered in this process.
Yes, it has.
And you have to clearly state what you're spending the money on, and how it applies to each parcel. And I, I had questions, because I didn't hear that some of those were addressed.
You can keep the questions and give them to the staff, they'll answer them for you. Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment?
Good evening, my name is Tim Sullivan, and I'm a resident here in Placerville. And I spent pretty much the last twenty years working for the other water and sewer purveyor in this county. And I was a project manager and a senior engineer, so I understand what you're going through. It's a lot of work. You have a lot of hard decisions to make. It's not exactly popular with the public on the financial side of the equation. But just a couple of comments, um, things that I learned along the way in those twenty years, is there's two main things you need to be careful of. One of them's prevention, and the other one is sustainability. And that's your budget and your facilities, making sure that they're sustainable, that you can keep those facilities running without having to come back to your constituents continually increasing, increasing, increasing on a higher level, rather than a gradual level. So that's the sustainability part of it. The other part of it is prevention. And, uh, uh, one, one quick comment about the, uh, sustainability is, um, I was a little concerned to hear that you had depleted your, uh, rate stability fund. That is a huge issue that can come up and bite you, because one of the things that, working for that other purveyor, we found out real early on, when I was working for them, is that the costs of power and chemicals and other items that you have no control over will go up and down, and that fund will help you buffer that issue. I know you have a contingency, but usually that's for other issues. So with that, uh, back to the, uh, prevention, I saw that you have a couple of programs. One of them was for fog, and the other one is for, uh, roots. I was heavily involved with the collection system for the other purveyor, and very, very heavily involved in the wastewater treatment plants. And I can tell you that the more you spend on your collection system per, to prevent INI, which is infiltration inflow, the more you'll save down the pipe with your treatment and your treatment costs. And the biggest thing that you'll find out, the biggest savings that you could possibly get per dollar spent on that prevention is service laterals. And it's a whole other topic, thirty-five seconds left, I can't even talk about that, but look into your service laterals, those are where your roots are, and it's usually where about seventy percent of your infiltration is coming from in your collection system. You reduce that, you reduce your operating costs significantly. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next.
That was a lot of good information from someone that sounds like they know what they're doing. Okay, and yes to gradual increases, not steep ones. It'd be nice if the city just let the public know about how state unfunded mandates are impacting these, everything from, you know, the, the brand-new treatment plant, over-the-top CalPERS pensions, increased studies, monitoring, all that. Just going back to the yes-on-L campaign, it stated that if Measure L was gonna fail, that water would go up twenty-two percent, sewer up eleven percent. But now we're looking at, Measure L did pass, and we're looking at water going up thirty-five percent, sewer going up twenty-five percent, and now a fifteen percent drought charge, surcharge on top of that. It's getting a little out of control. Uh, city's already adopted an auto-inflation component, uh, but which inflator are you using? Like the San Francisco Bay Area or SAC-Arden? Because there's a big difference. I don't think San Francisco inflation applied to us is fair. I do like the lower base rate to protect the lower income. The, uh, lifeline, state law does not allow ratepayer funds to be used to pay for the lifeline system, which is a twenty-five percent discount. You can use the money from somewhere else, it can't be ratepayer money. I just think the public needs to know that. Speaking of that, to the study, page ten, table three point four, it's showing the commercial, well, single-family uses, anyway, there's commercial and multifamily, five hundred and three accounts. Commercial, multifamily, li- Commercial multifamily lifeline, two accounts. Question is, why is a commercial enterprise or multifamily, another commercial enterprise, getting a lifeline discount? And you see, there's two commercial lifeline accounts, and they are using sixteen percent of all of the commercial use there. So what's up with those two accounts out of five hundred and three? They need to be studied and removed. And on top of these new rate increases, we are looking at two new state laws coming at us real soon, totaling up to, with both of them, twenty-four dollars to two hundred and forty dollars a year on top of whatever increases you pass on us here. So, good times. Okay, to one of these pages, it's showing the debt service cost, the SRF loan bonds. Why is the city hall lease included in this for about forty-five thousand dollars a year? What's the justification for putting that on the ratepayers? And why have the sewer plant loans and bonds not been refinanced yet? City council authorized this, believe a consultant has been hired, so why is it not done yet? Um, back to their study, pretty good job on it. So that's just a question, will the city consider reducing or removing the lifeline because it doesn't seem to be state law, just city policy? And regarding the Prop 218, can you describe how officially somebody can send in a notice? I mean, it could just be a simple letter saying, "I oppose this," but there's supposed to be a vote tally. So when will that happen? Where will it happen? By law, it has to be a public process. Everyone gets to watch it. So how, when, where, and why on Prop 218?
Mike, can you wrap it up?
That looks good. I would really like you to not do the drought, fifteen percent on top of all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Tom Compton. I'm a resident and sewer customer and, um, member of the Measure HL committee. Um, I want to address some of the comments that the other members of the public have made tonight. Uh, first on the Prop 218 process. Um, the workshop that was held earlier this month is not a mandated part of the Prop 218 process. That's something that the city did above and beyond the requirements of the law. What the law requires is, um, is, uh, that the rates conform to the requirement that Sue Taylor was trying to read at the end of her comments. Um, and that's evidenced by, uh, normally by a consultant's study. You, you've got a draft consultant's study in your, in your packet tonight, and, and Mr. Drobish was just quoting from that. Um, that study needs to be complete by the time you actually adopt the rates, which would be in February according to your schedule. Um, Prop 218 requires notice to property owners, which, uh, if you authorize that tonight, will happen. Um, and it, and it allows a forty-five day, minimum forty-five day protest period. Uh, it appears to me the city's actually planning on, uh, affording about sixty-day protest period, probably in light of the fact that it's occurring over the holidays. So I commend you for that. Um, the, someone brought up the issue of whether the city's getting the best price from EID, and since I was working at EID at the time, I can tell you that, uh, the city negotiated very hard with EID on that, uh, to the point where one of the EID board of directors voted against the, uh, the, uh, rates for the city. Director Prada felt that the rates for the city were too low and that the city was getting a big break from EID at the cost of other EID ratepayers. Um, so, uh, I think you've probably done about as well as you can in terms of negotiating the price of water from EID. Uh, all of that is, is based on actual costs, uh, just as the, the study of, of your rates is based on actual costs. Um, I agree very well, uh, I thought that Sue Rodman expressed very well the, uh, the reasons for the Measure H committee, which I've been a part of from the, from the outset, uh, having the sewer, uh, rate, uh, refunds to begin with, and the reason that, that they have served their purpose and, and should now go away. Um, Mr. Drobish raises a, uh, a troubling concern with respect to the lifeline rate program that the city has, uh, and I would encourage you to look at that. Um, having said that, sometimes law and policy don't align, and I think that the lifeline program is a very good public policy. So if you feel that it is legally justifiable in any way, I would encourage you to keep it. Um, otherwise, you're going to hit the people who can least afford these rates the hardest. Uh, and then, uh, shoot, there was one more point, but I'm out of time anyway, so, uh, thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Elizabeth Zangary. I'm also a sewer and water customer as well as a member of the Measure H committee since the, since the onset. And, um, to some of the comments that were, and questions that were asked, I would encourage anyone, everyone, to attend these, um, Measure HL committee meetings. When we were discussing the, um, potential recommendations to the city council, we held the meeting here in this room, and we had no members of the public present at all. So that was the opportunity to discuss some of these finer points of why we're making the recommendations we, we did. Um, I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Warren, that some of those materials are available on the Measure H, from the Measure H committee records. So, um, it's hard to be a citizen sometimes and to make recommendations on hard decisions, but, um, we found that it was important at this point to rip the bandage off and, um, move forward with getting to a, a lower base rate in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I just have one quick question. When this, um, process was first introduced some months ago, I had asked about the wastewater flooding in February and, um, what the cost of that was and how that was being financed. I recall that that was going to, that there was a hope that FEMA would reimburse the city's expense. So my question is, is twofold. One, I remember perhaps incorrectly that the expense to the city was about three-quarters of a million, but it might have been a half a million, but, you know, we're talking big money. Um, how much was the cost to the city and did FEMA reimburse that? And perhaps more relevantly is, is, did that expense or is that expense in any way impacting what's happening now? Where did that money come from if FEMA did not reimburse that? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment?
Um, I guess like the first speaker, my answer is socket to us. It's hard to imagine how a half a dozen people could, given three minutes each, uh, change the course that you're on, given especially the enormity of the financial numbers. And secondly, I, my concern is, as some have expressed, the issue of transparency. I guess over the years I've adopted a modified Reagan doctrine of distrust and verify. Uh, you have, uh, a figure where you've, uh, you know, you, uh, we were told when Measure L came up that if we didn't pass it, if the city didn't pass it, we'd be stuck with a twenty percent increase in water rates. And it's hard to believe that what we're addressing now is something the city didn't know about last year, the year before, that these costs for overhead and payment on, on, on debt was going up and up. And it's difficult to imagine why this couldn't have been displayed long ago. And that, that is one concern. It's just hard to understand why it, it does come at the end of the year when there wouldn't be necessarily as much attention when rates are being proposed for increases in a number of different areas in water. And I know that on the same matter, the same issue goes up on, on parking fees. I, I know that was here, the statement was made that...
We're not talking about parking fees tonight.
Well, what we're talking about is transparency.
I understand that, but let's keep our transparency to water and sewer things. Thank you.
I think it's the same thing, and I'll tell you why it's the same thing. Because the statement was made that you're not going to affect commercial properties, and, and this issue does affect commercial properties for the same reason parking does. Mayor, you may not manage property, but I do. And when you said a few months ago that it doesn't make any difference to commercial people, I'll tell you that it does. Why? Because the value of our property depends on the kind of rent you can charge, which in turn depends on the kind of fees you have. So we've been raising rents, and we keep telling our tenants that you can attribute it to various decisions of the city, like raising sewer, raising water to very high levels, as well as parking decisions that affects the ability of the tenants to raise money, which in turn affects the value of the owners. So contrary to what you said, that's not really the reality. And when I look at these kind of decisions that are reflected over here with reference to the subject of discount rates, um, it would have been much more helpful if it was percentages. My time isn't up, but thank you very much. I've got about twenty seconds left. And, and it would have been more helpful if it was in terms of percentages because it's hard to understand why you have a certain low rate for a fire station when we see them out there washing their fire engines far more often than anybody in the commercial or, or private sector. So there doesn't seem to be a lot of rationality all the way up the line when you use those numbers versus percentages. Thank you.
Would anybody else wish to speak on this? We will bring it back here. Okay, are there any questions now or whatnot? We'll start down there. Do you have any questions? Okay. Do you have questions? I have one.
Go ahead.
Questions, not comments, correct, Mr. Mayor?
Comments. Well, you can make comments all you want, but questions first.
Questions first. Thank you, sir.
Right. Um, okay.
I had a couple.
Go ahead.
If it would help, Councilmember Thomas.
Well, we can go through some of those.
And a couple of these are related to that. Um, and this is an issue that's a very fair question, and it's come up a number of times over the years, and that is, um, the growth factor that was designed into the wastewater treatment plant. Do we have an idea? There's, there's a rightful concern that we built that, currently we're a city, if you believe the Caltrans sign, of ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-one people. Um, there's been comments that the plant was designed to handle up twenty or forty thousand residents. Can we get some idea of what the growth capacity is out there that we're, didn't overbuy, didn't overbuild?
Uh, Councilmember Kuna, I don't have any exact figures for you, uh, but, you know, it's my understanding that the wastewater treatment plant was designed to handle the growth as anticipated in our general plan and also included, um, additional growth in the city's sphere of influence.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So there was a rationale for it?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, actually, I was thinking now, maybe we should go back. There was a number of questions that came from the audience.
Okay.
Perhaps we could kind of go through some of those. Some of them I think are un, well, not unanswerable, but certainly not this evening, and we will, we will do that. But, Mr. Morris?
That's what I was going to, that's what I was going to suggest. I'm going to, if we can, turn it back to Mr. Warren to go through some of those questions, the ones that we do have answers for tonight. If we don't have answers, we can try and get those for you. So, and for the public.
Thank you, Cleve. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. So, um, Sue Taylor had some questions, and I would echo, uh, Mr. Compton, Compton's comments about Proposition 218, that the workshop held on November eighth was not required by Proposition 218. We just thought it was the right thing to do. Uh, we placed a notice in the September bills advertising that. Again, that was not required by Proposition 218. Uh, we placed a notice in the, uh, November bill for this meeting, which was not required by Proposition 218. Um, and we also placed articles in the paper advertising both meetings, um, again, not required by Proposition 218. Um, so, and as far as the rates, they have not been decided. If the council chose to, um, issue the 218 notice, which does not, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doug or Michael or John Driscoll, um, we do not have to have the notice here tonight for you to take action. We will have to have a notice in place, obviously, before it goes out to the ratepayers. It will be sent to every ratepayer or pro- property owner that has a, a water sewer account in the city limits. Um, that's something, and, and as far as the timing, um, there's never a good time, uh, unfortunately, but, um, let's see. The debt, um, Ms. Taylor asked what the, uh, debt is. The original two thousand and six SRF loan, uh, principal balance was forty-two million, eight-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. Um, since that time, uh, the balance is, uh, thirty-three million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. Um, again, I would echo, uh, Mr. Compton's comments regarding negotiations with EID. I actually sat in those negotiations the last two contracts, and we were very aggressive, um, with them, um, making sure that we're getting full credit for the property tax. Um, a lot of people don't realize, but EID does receive some of our property tax, uh, through the proposition or, uh, the ABH negotiation process. Um, and also, we are not serviced by all their, uh, infrastructure. Primarily, we're serviced by Project 184, which is to the east. Um, and, uh, and so ensuring that we're only paying our fair share for water, um, and really looking after the best interests of our ratepayers. And the solar project, um, Cleve, could you comment on the cost and...
Before we, before we talk about the solar project, do we mark up the money that, the, the, the cost?
I was going to comment on that.
Okay, go ahead.
We do not mark up water.
We do not mark it up.
We simply put our water costs into our expenses and then our cost of delivering that. So, correct, Dave?
Yeah, so the cost of water, um, the assumed increases in cost of purchasing water from EID, as well as the cost of maintaining the distribution system. So the water comes to the bulk meter, uh, I believe there's ten bulk meters throughout town, and then we have to deliver it safely, read the meters, bill the customer, uh, so on and so forth. All those costs are included in the budget.
So the total cost of the solar project is approximately three-point-two million dollars, as I recall.
For out there at the plant?
For, at the wastewater treatment plant, correct? Yes.
In regards to the equipment, um, it's primarily public works equipment, trucks, um, for the fleet. Um, the first two years of the, uh, budget does not include any equipment, uh, for public works. Um, the idea is to defer those purchases until year three and, uh, make the purchase through a cap, five-year capital lease at about three and a half percent, a little over three hundred thousand dollars for that equipment. Uh, there was a comment by, I think it was Mr. Sullivan, about the depletion of the rate stabilization reserve. Some folks may not know that rate stabilization reserve was established specifically for the workout of the oh-six, um, SRF loan. And the idea was, so the original loan was a twenty-year loan. Um, it was then extended because of, um, ratepayer pushback on the rates. It was extended to thirty years, um, because of foreclosures, slow pay, so on and so forth, uh, cash flow issues. We, uh, went back to the state and said, "Look, we need to do a workout of the loan." So the original payment was, uh, two million dollars at twenty years, then it went to one-point-four million at thirty years. And we said, "How about year one, we pay, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, year two, four hundred thousand dollars, year three, eight hundred thousand dollars, year four, the ultimate rate of, uh, one, one-point-five million per year?" Uh, they said yes, and, uh, in the meantime, in the years when we were paying two hundred, four hundred, eight hundred, we were setting aside the, uh, net revenues into this rate stabilization reserve. That reserve was actually estimated to be depleted two years ago. The only reason why it lasted as long as we did is we had, uh, a significant amount of development, um, and some good luck over the last few years. Um, and so we were able to use, uh, be, those connection fees, uh, are, we were able to use, uh, towards the, the, the rate stabilization reserve and payment. And so that shored up that reserve over the last two years. However, um, this fiscal year, we're anticipating a slowdown in, in, in development and connections, and, um, that, uh, reserve will be depleted this year based on our forecast. Let's see. As far as the unfunded mandates, um... and that reserve will be depleted this year based on our forecast. As far as the unfunded mandates, Rick, I don't know if you and Steve could talk to that, some of the unfunded things that we're testing and reporting?
Yeah, so unfunded mandates. The FOG program is one that we are not doing, that we need to do, and that's the fats, oils, and grease program. That is very, very much a problem in the city that we run into on a daily basis. That needs to be implemented, and it needs to be managed all the time. It can't just be on and off, and so we need to put that in. The root intrusion program is a new program, and as you heard Mr. Sullivan say, EID's learned that that is a big problem, and it's the best solution. And so that's something that we need to implement. And we have most of the equipment, but it takes materials and it takes labor to implement that program. The additional staffing, as Dave showed out back in 2009, we were five people down from then. So we really need to increase our staff to be compliant with our regulatory mandates, and that's where we're trying to get back to.
And one of the largest unfunded mandates was the improvements to our plant. We had a cease and desist order, it was either in the late '90s or early 2000s, that basically said unless we made certain improvements to our plant to cool our effluent, which is the water out of the plant into Hangtown Creek, and reduce the pollution, that we would be fined $10,000 a day, which was actually more than the debt service on the $45 million of improvements that we ultimately constructed and completed in 2009. The Lifeline program is, it's a program, my understanding this program has been in place before 1996, which is when Proposition 218 was passed by the voters of California. There have been modifications made to Lifeline, and that's if something, if the council would like us to look at that, we can do that. I can tell you right now, we have 335 Lifeline customers. In regards to the commercial Lifeline that Mr. Drobish mentioned, what that is, we have two apart, low-income apartment complexes in town where the tenants qualified for Lifeline, the care program through PG&E. So we were able to give them the Lifeline discount because their tenants qualify for Lifeline as a single-family residential customer. In regards to Proposition 218 instructions, there will be instructions on the notice how to protest. And Bartle Wells will be, excuse me, will be helping us with that to make sure that it's compliant. And we will also, as mentioned, we'll be placing a notice in the January bills to also reiterate that on February 13th, 2018, the city council, if they direct us to do this, will hold a hearing on the rates at that time. There was a question by Michael Drobish. Why is the city hall lease included in the sewer and water rates? The reason is, is that the sewer and water system benefit directly from the city hall. We couldn't issue bills if we didn't have the city hall building. We couldn't administer the water reclamation facility, or the engineering division housed them. So they all, both systems benefit from city hall, the facility, which is being used to run and operate, you know, more at an administrative level, the water and sewer system. There was a question about...
Dave, can I add, and just to add to that, that is not the full cost of the city hall lease. It's a proportionate share of that lease.
There was a study done by staff that looked at, thank you, at the benefit by both the sewer and water systems, and that benefit was derived as a percentage of debt service. And so the water and sewer's fair share was included in that. So, in regards to the refinancing of the 2006 revenue bonds, we are working on that. The initial draft official statement, which is the document that potential investors would look at, is, it was completed, it's not done, but the initial draft has been prepared by our attorney. Unfortunately, we can't go out to market because we don't have adequate sewer rates to demonstrate that we can make our payments.
Jeez.
So here we are. The winter storms, Ms. Veerkamp asked about the costs and where the money's coming from. And Rick, could you talk about the costs? You were most intimate with the FEMA CalOES process.
Yeah, Dave, so we are around $600,000 that we've submitted to FEMA. It's going through the process. That process, we do not have a date yet when that's going to be back to us. It looks very promising that we'll get most of that back, but it could be up to a year process. So the, some of the work has been done under our existing operating budget, some of the projects we had to do before winter, and then some of them are being funded through some Measure H monies, and a lot of it's being deferred until we can get money through FEMA.
Yeah, so the CalOES, the FEMA picks up 75% of approved projects. CalOES, the state, picks up 75 of the remaining 25%, so you end up about 93%. And then so the remaining little over 6% we're responsible for, and as Rick indicated, Measure H primarily is picking up that 6%. We are, cash flow-wise, we're being very careful until we receive our reimbursement from the feds and state. I think that's all the questions I noted, so.
All the ones I had. Mayor, could I add just one thing?
One thing.
And I'm going to state this, and then maybe Doug or Michael could add to this. It was asked about how the count works of the ballots for the public hearing. It's my understanding that would be done actually at the public hearing as those come in, but maybe Doug, you can add to that.
Good evening, Doug, Bartle Wells. Yeah, typically, it's, the ballots are counted as they're received by the city, and then there's some additional ballots brought to the public hearing. Those are also counted at the meeting, and then a total is presented to the council. And the percent of the, the number of parcels is also presented so that the council knows if the 50% threshold has been reached. So, thank you.
It'll be very exciting. Okay. I think that sounded like all the ones I had written down. All right. Do we have any questions up here? Wendy?
I will save my comments for a little bit later. First of all, I had four pages of notes and questions, Dave, and I have to tell you, you answered each and every one of them in your presentation. And especially that, the first half where you went through all the reasons why, that was probably one of the clearest presentations that I've seen, and I really appreciated that really critical information. Like I said, I had four pages, you answered them. I do have one further question. On the, one of the last slides, you say, "What would happen if rates are not increased?" And you state that services would have to be cut. That's a nebulous statement. What are we talking about here?
It could be all services or a mix of services. We would look very carefully if that were to happen. We would look at the entire budget and first look at where else, I mean, we've turned over every stone, but maybe return the stone over again of where we could save some money. For example, the solar project that Mr. Morris spoke about, it takes money to save that money, but that's something we want to strive towards. But we would look at everything. I would say, you know, it could affect as, even just customer service, you know, if somebody wants to call and turn off their water, do an audit of their water, I mean, it could affect those things. I mean, it could, basic services, it could affect our response time to leaks, sewer spills, all those things. So...
So we're talking about services in the water and sewer delivery system, is what we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay.
Because you'd have to take, my, correct me if I'm wrong, if we don't get enough money, then we would have to take our available human resources and dedicate them to the sewage treatment plant, because that is the most complex and most expensive thing we run. And that would create a cascading effect out in the system where we couldn't respond to calls as efficiently for like backups and leaks and stuff like that, because you would take your resources and you'd have to start focusing your resources into the places that were the most important. And the operation of the sewage treatment plant is the, has the greatest cost.
Okay. Okay. I'll save my comments to the latter for the questions.
Any other questions?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so our reclamation facility, how much wiggle room do we have? Like, say we're going to do like annexation, can we handle it? Like, would rates like explode because there's more going in? Or is it like, yeah, that's cool because we could do it? Or what would happen with that?
Well, if you grow the pie, that would definitely help all your ratepayers, because it's a new source. There's a cost of providing the service, but you gain economies of scale.
Would there be, like, would the state say, "Oh, no, we need a bigger facility. You have $42 million? No, now it has to be $62 million because you have more?" Or is it going to stay the same?
Based on Mr. Rivas's comments about fully building out not only the city limits, but our sphere of influence, it would take quite a bit of growth for us to hit that point. So I, that would be a long ways off, I believe.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
You bet.
So along those lines, isn't that why we did what we did, right? For future? I mean, so that we would be prepared to grow?
Reasonably, yes. I, you know...
I mean, that was my understanding.
The primary reason for the improvements to the plant really was just health and safety. It was...
I know, but, but we did, with, you know, with the, knowing that we, we are going to grow.
Right.
And I think Pierre brought up the, you know, what they used as a guideline, because it's obvious we're going to grow.
Yes, if I can just echo what Mr. Warren just said. Basically, the plant was redesigned to meet the increase in state requirements as far as the quality of the effluent. But the plan is designed to handle build-out as predicated through the city's adopted general plan.
Right.
So if this, as the city continues to grow, we see a lot of subdivisions, vacant lots being built, the plant will be able to accept all of that growth without really, very little increase in cost, because the plan, of course, is designed to handle that increase in the effluent into the plant.
Do you have, do you have a number or a ballpark?
No, it's like what I told to Councilmember Acuna, I don't have the exact numbers for you on what those volumes are, but the plant was designed to handle that additional growth. For example, the Smith Flat area, we were anticipating that annexing and being able to readily serve that area, and of course, that additional revenue will help reduce the cost overall. Because as Mr. Warren said, it's just, you cut the pie up in a lot of, you know, more pieces.
So, for example, we were just saying that some of that area, for example, the Smith, some of the Smith Flat area, we already serve. That was extended that time. The other thing, I was looking back at, you talk about growing the pie. If you think about what we talked about, a major portion of our costs right now are that 45 cents per dollar. So the debt service, that debt service wouldn't change necessarily if we annexed within our general plan, sphere of influence area, but it would spread that fixed cost amongst a larger number of users.
A larger number, so it would be...
Okay. Are there any other questions up here?
If I could give you a figure, Mr. Mayor, but Mr. Ferrer was able to help me here with the wastewater treatment facility. We're currently running about 1.2 million gallons per day, and that's existing development. But we do have, we have the ability to reach 4.6 million per day.
Oh, okay.
So it's more than double what...
Got it. I think that's what we were looking for, some numbers. Thank you.
Okay. So, and so are we, are we done with the Q and A part of this?
Yes.
Okay.
And all four pages of Wendy, that's...
I know, it's remarkable.
Dave is a star.
All right, let's, we'll go around the horn. Anybody have any comments? Go.
Okay. First of all, extraordinary thanks to our Measure H and L committee. You've done a Herculean job of going through this very complicated issue and giving us some excellent recommendations and interfacing with staff to best serve our community. Just really appreciate all of your efforts, and thank you all for your excellent comments tonight. We've all really struggled with this issue. And the question that I've wrestled with is, what makes good policy? And the question is, good for who? Is it good in the moment? Are we concerned with the fact that, are people okay with our decision right now? Or is good policy, policy that achieves the best outcome for our city in the long term? And I think that leads, that led me to ask the question, what is our goal in this issue? Is our goal, number one, to keep prices low and stable? Because that would be one course of action that has consequences. Or, number two, is our goal to ensure that our water resources are conserved so that our water pipes aren't leaking, that our water is safe, that no sewer is leaking into them, that our systems are maintained so sewer doesn't back up into your homes, that our city is compliant, so we don't waste money paying fines for sewer spills, that we cover our debt for the sewer treatment plant, and that all this is accomplished at the price of what it costs our city without excess and with efficient service delivery? Because to me, when I was able to articulate and identify that goal, it showed me how we need to get there. Because no one wants to raise water and sewer rates, my goodness, especially not us, because our necks are on the line. When you read about it in the paper, you're going to look at the five of us and say, "What did they do?" We don't want to do that. But the struggle for money, or the struggle for rates, is really a struggle over values. What do we value? Oh, the better question is, what should we value? Static rates, or a safe, efficient, stable, and maintained water and sewer delivery system? Because obviously, to me, it's the latter. And I am in, I am in favor of this course of action because I have every confidence in going through this very in-depth process that we've embarked on and that we will continue to embark on as we go through this process, that these rates will accomplish a safe and efficient water sewer, sewer delivery system in the most fiscally restrained manner possible. Because I know every member of our staff and every member of this city council is committed to doing that. So thank you for your engaged discussion tonight, and you're working with us on this process moving forward.
Anyone else?
I think, I agree wholeheartedly with Wendy, but, and I think when she was, when you talked about the comparisons, that's what we had to do. We were, we were sort of forced into your first, you know, what your comparison, number one and number two, during this recession. And I think, I, there is some, I mean, they always say, "Well, you know, yes, I am blaming, I'm blaming our recession." We went through a terrible period, we tried to keep the city in the black, and we succeeded. But in the meantime, it was, we had to give up a lot, and that's exactly what happened. And if we don't go forward now, we're going to stay in a recession, and we're going to pay the price. I don't, the scenarios that Mr. Warren presented, what's going to happen if we don't do this? And everybody's probably saying, "Well, why isn't happening now?" It's because we have reached the end of that period. We, now's the time to act. We've got to. And we've got to replace equipment that we kept, we kept, I think, from what I understand, the guys kept making it, plugging along with what we had. And we just, they, it's run out of steam, too. And we need more, we need more help down there. Our guys carried the ball and did it gladly because they had, well, maybe, I don't know how glad they were about it, but, but I mean, they did it because of what we were all going through. And so I, it's just time. We just cannot continue, like I say, this recession mode. We've got to go forward. That's my comment.
Very good, well done. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, would like to thank the Measure H L committee for their hard work, their dedication to this. I know it's frustrating for them to hold their meetings and not have... Um, I know it, it's frustrating for them to hold their meetings and not have anybody from the public show up, even though they know full well that the issues that they're discussing have huge impacts to every household budget in its town. So thank you, and please carry on. And, um, anyone that's interested in participating in that process, please get ahold of one of us or our city manager, because we're always interested in new ideas and new enthusiastic participants. Um, and I appreciate the fact that Dave was able to answer Wendy's questions, and, because those were a lot of my questions also. And I think, uh, unfortunately, some of the, the people that asked them have, had, had to leave, but they were very reasonable and necessary questions. To have that transparency, I think, is huge. I've been involved in the rates when the big rate increase hit in 2008, 2009. And that was a very unpleasant experience. And there weren't enough forefathers to point at in those days as to who, who chose to just decide not to fix anything in this old town. And, and over these past ten years, fortunately, uh, through the recession, we've turned out to be a very popular place to come and a very popular place to live. And as my fellow council members have hit upon, um, we have a responsibility to keep our rates as low as humanly possible. But because we are in a town that's a hundred and fif, over a hundred and fifty years old, we almost have sewer and water systems that are that old. And the huge risk to public safety exists on some of our streets because our pipes are all in the same ditches and they're all falling apart at the same rate. As we've fortunately regained steam from the recession, um, and I've had an opportunity in my current term on the council to watch the Public Works Crew, the sewer, the sewer plant crew, um, and our public safety folks work, uh, on a day-to-day basis, they're literally holding this town together still with bandages and, and smoke and mirrors. And I don't think that that is, uh, an inappropriate or responsible way to go forward. So I think it's really important that we have, uh, we, we honor our obligation to operate a safe and a compliant system, both water and sewer. And we focus a lot on the sewer, but Sew Rodman over the years has reminded me that our, if we were to have a, a sewer water spilled together, that the, the notoriety that that would bring us would be something that we would never, ever, ever, uh, outlive or want to have in our town. So the importance of keeping both of these systems safe and operating is, is just crucial. The need to have proper staffing is just, uh, very, very, very necessary. These, these same men and women have worked overtime, double shifts, weekends, again, keeping everything running. And, and it wasn't just during the big storms. As the council knows, unfortunately, our system hiccups on a regular basis, and it does cause substantial property damage claims, certainly more than enough to fund a position in any given year.
Right.
So I think that, that certainly is time. The information that staff and our consultant has presented us this evening represents that good combination between responsible rate-setting and operating a safe and sustainable system. My only frustration is that I, I think some of our audience members understand the impact that we face from the state and federal bureaucracy and their unfunded impact. The sewer, the greatest one was the sewer plant that in one year won a state award for being the most efficient operational sewer plant for a city of its size, and the next year was operating under notice of violation because the state changed the regulations, the very same sewer treatment plant. That was the beginning of my education in unfunded mandates. Uh, somebody, I believe they've left now, talked about the fire department washing their trucks out in front of the fire station. Reality in the state of California is, we can't put that kind of, they can't wash the fire trucks anymore because that's an illegal discharge into our stormwater system. And the stormwater regulations are just in their infancy. The state and federal government have marvelous surprises for us. I mean, we already know we can't put fire hydrant water down a storm drain.
That's possible.
Because of the chlorination. And these are the kind of challenges that our staff have dealt with for many, many years. And it is huge. I see Michael Drobys smiling in the back, and he's absolutely right. And so as, I do not want to see these rates go up one penny. But do I have a responsibility to make sure that this system and these employees and the, and, and these citizens are protected? Absolutely. So, thank you. And thank you for the staff for all their hard work and our consultant.
I, I have one additional thing. Measure H and Measure L were, both mentioned several times, and I don't think we've really addressed it. Um, oh, are you gonna do that, John? Okay, well, then I'll just wait till...
Um, I'll, I'll wait.
Well, okay. Um, okay, there's a couple things in here. It's interesting. We, uh, you often hear people say, we should run government like a business. Well, this is our business right here. Uh, in fact, um, the city of Plascherville is a business, uh, but this sewage treatment plant is a business in the provision of, of supplying people water. And I think what really makes it obvious that it's a business is when, uh, Mr. Warren said that we can't get a loan because we don't make enough money, which is essentially it. Our rates do not bring in currently enough revenue to cover our costs on the sewer side, and we can't get a loan. That would be no different than if someone who didn't have a job went into a bank and said, I'd like some money. This is a business. The sewage treatment plant is the most expensive thing the city owns, I imagine, by a lot. It's probably worth more than a couple of years of the budget of the city. Um, I'm guessing that the size of it, yes, it was made to accommodate growth, but there's almost like when you build a house, you know, you put in your three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and you got like eighteen hundred square feet. The extra hundred square feet, the marginal cost is pretty low. Adding the additional capacity to the sewage treatment plant was probably not, it would have cost, I'm gonna just pull some numbers right out of the air. I'm gonna say the, the plant to cover what we had was like thirty million bucks or thirty-five million bucks. And to make it bigger so we could accommodate growth might have been thirty-eight million dollars. I'm just pulling numbers out. So the marginal cost of doing that work was a good investment. It was an investment in the city's future. So we're running a business. We are investing in that business. We are going to make sure that we have enough staff. We need more policemen, for example, as well. That's not the subject of this conversation. I will, uh, defend the workshop. I actually thought we had a lot of interaction. People got up and spoke at length about certain topics. We had them come back and speak at length. We engaged them. I think it's kind of odd to criticize a workshop that you didn't actually go to and then say it wasn't good enough. I noticed that the people, the other thing, too, is, this thing being done this time of year, if the, but if we were doing it in April, there'd be a problem with April. If we were doing it in June, we'd be a problem in June. And if we were doing something in October, we'd have a problem in October. Because the people that don't want this to happen would find a reason why that particular time on the calendar was disadvantaged to some sort of public outreach. The folks that generally have the greatest antipathy towards us tend to leave. Because they don't want to hear this part. This is the part where we get to say our piece to demonstrate that we've actually thought about this, to demonstrate that we care about the people in this city dearly. We have empathy. Uh, Measure L. We had a lot of Measure L workshops. We talked about Measure L ad nauseam. Every time we had a Measure L workshop, we had a bunch of pipes rusted and otherwise sitting around. We had pictures of crumbling pavement. Now, that doesn't mean that you could have walked away from there thinking, well, they're never gonna raise my rates. But we were certainly talking about capital improvement. And the costs that we were talking about were focused on capital improvement. If folks walked away from that thinking, well, if they pass Measure L, that somehow their rates to operate and maintain the system were never gonna go up, I don't know what to do about that. But I don't think there was anything wrong with Measure L messaging. I don't think there was anything wrong with the Measure L information. We were talking about capital improvements, and we made that clear to folks. These are maximums. One of those slides showed you what the rate would have been if it was passed in 2010 or whenever the heck the rate study was done. To this day, we've never come anywhere near that rate, and none of the rates that we are suggesting doing get anywhere near that rate, I don't think. I don't want to say, maybe way off in the year five. So these are maximums. If we run our business well, and, and there's, and, and God blesses us with some providence, we may not have to raise those rates to the maximum. Anyway, so those were my comments. Business, workshop, Measure L, these are maximums, and I'm gonna defend the process once again. The process is what it is. We had a workshop. I thought it went really well. I don't know why people don't come to meetings. I do meetings all the time. The only ones that get, well, they're like these meetings. If you wanna get a lot of people in a room, talk about water in California. They will come to those meetings. And we could do them on Christmas Eve, and people would come to those meetings. We're gonna probably get lambasted because of the amount of information that has been provided. There is no way to have this discussion without knowing these things. It takes time to discuss them. I am not going to apologize for the amount of information that we gave you tonight. It is actually less than we'd covered in the workshop.
Yes.
But it is vital to know. We are human beings. We have souls. We do not want to do this, but it is time to do something about these rates. Or the business that we call giving you water and collecting your sewage is gonna go out of business. And that would be intolerable and inexcusable. So, those are my comments. Tricia, do you have any to add?
Um, I do.
Okay.
I would like to say that I agree with every single thing that everybody up here said tonight, especially you, Mayor. And if you would allow me, I would like to make a motion.
No, no, of course.
Okay. Um, I would move, I would like to move, um, number, uh, recommendation one and two. Authorizing staff to distribute a Proposition 218 notice to the city ratepayers as soon as practicable, including a proposition water rates, drought water rates, and wastewater rates, and directing staff to hold a Proposition 218 public hearing regarding said water rates, drought water rates, and wastewater rates on, I don't know about the, what?
Go, no, go ahead.
Oh.
You just reminded me of something.
Okay, no.
February thirteenth?
Yes.
There you go.
It, does it have to be February? I don't know if that's gonna work for...
Well, that, that is our, that is our city council meeting. That's our first council meeting in February. That's why that day was chosen.
Okay.
Thirteenth is right.
Thirteenth is right, okay.
Yes.
Is that your motion?
So you've made the motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, hold on one second. I do want to bring up one thing, and those are the drought rates.
Oh, yeah.
Now, I know that we have, under, if there was a drought rate before, we have never implemented it, correct?
To my knowledge, we've never had drought rates.
Okay.
They've never done it.
I can understand that they would be a specter sitting out there for some folks, and I didn't want to let that go because I think Mike brought it up and a couple other people brought it up. And I wanna talk, I, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but, um, are these, okay, I, uh, do we have to, do we have to do something with the drought rates in this action?
That's, well, I was gonna ask Cleve. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go right ahead if you're thinking...
Um, does that, will that be rediscussed on the thirteenth? Correct?
All, all of this will be rediscussed.
Yeah, so we don't have to decide.
All of this can be either approved or not approved.
There's still an opportunity.
Very good. Very good.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Those would be the maximum rates that we wouldn't, that we would...
Right.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Wouldn't have to implement when the time came.
You would have to take additional action beyond February thirteenth. So let's say a year from now, we, we enter into a drought, we anticipate losing twenty percent or more, and, um, people are reducing their consumption. We're required to reduce our consumption as a city by twenty percent or more. You would then have to direct staff to implement those rates or lesser rates. Now, let's, let's say hypothetically, on February thirteenth, you decide not to approve the, um, drought rates for future use. What would happen is, okay, a year later, we go into a drought, we would then have to go through the whole Proposition 218 process again, forty-five day notice, the whole thing.
But this, excuse me, but this is also, the, the drought rate would be triggered by EID declaring...
Or the state.
Or the state.
Correct.
Correct.
But we're not gonna charge...
But we would not be required to do it, even if those entities did. Although EID might start getting really flusy with their rates.
You could actually, that's correct. So you could go, your loss could be thirty percent, and you could say, you know, we're just not going to do that. We're not gonna pass on higher rates because of this drought.
Okay.
It just allows us to go through the process at the same time and holds our ability to do that if we get into a situation where we cannot afford to cover the cost of our, of operating our system.
That's correct. It's a safety net that you can choose to do, use.
Right.
Right.
And, and the reality with EID and their water situation, we had to cut back our usage because the state mandated us to cut back our usage. EID is, no pun intended, flush with water. And, um, and quite honestly, it would have to be one big deep drought before they would actually have to start cutting back voluntarily on their side because they sell, well, in the middle of the drought, they were selling water to like Westlands and folks like that. Okay. I just wanted to bring that up because that was a question that was mentioned, and I thought it was important to not let it just pass.
And I'm not sure we all understood it, but it's clear now, and I think it ought to be.
Well, it's the old bugaboo. You ask people to...
Exactly.
You ask people to, to stop using water, they stop using water because they're good citizens, thank you. Then your revenues go down, and all of a sudden, you're not covering your costs, so you have to come back and raise rates. And that is a discussion. I've actually had to do meetings like that. It is horrible. That's the second biggest meeting you'll ever have, is to talk about rates during a drought. They're horrible. So anyway, but I just wanted to get that out there for folks.
Can I just add, too, that one of the reasons I think the drought rates are even more important now, too, and I hope it doesn't happen, we don't think it will in the next five years, but reckon, I remember that we lowered our base rate as part of this process.
Right.
Which means in a drought, that revenue goes even lower and is, becomes more critical.
Yeah. So it is, it is a, it is a critical thing for our business called water treatment and whatnot. Okay.
We have a motion?
We have a motion and a second. Uh, call the roll.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just add one additional comment. Thank you very much for your guidance this evening.
Oh.
And taking us through this, this issue. And I would, uh, there were several questions this evening, and, and again, unfortunately, I think those folks have left. But this actually takes us to the first Proposition 218 action, this meeting and moving forward. There were some concerns that we'd, we'd missed a step, or we'd concealed some information, or we hadn't given proper opportunities. That has just now begun. So they will have an opportunity to watch us make every single one of those appropriate notifications and communications right on time and right per the regulation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Whew. Thank you very much, Fair, everybody, for doing that. Uh, we do have a little bit of an agenda. It's not much, but it's really nothing. Anyway, uh, council reports from other agency meetings, go. Eldorado County Transit, you didn't have a meeting.
No meeting.
Uh, Eldorado County Transportation Commission?